Welcome to the September 12, 2024 Planning Board Public Hearing Meeting. Since there aren't that many in the audience, I'll just say that in case of an emergency, there are two doors that go out here, go down the stairs and out the front door. And pray you don't have to do that. So we'll have a roll call, please.
Chair LaFaro.
Present.
Vice Chair Finnerty.
Present.
The Secretary is here. Board Member Mutu.
Present.
Board Member Neely.
Present.
Board Member Fulham.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Please join us for the Fledge of Allegiance. Thank you. We'll go in order of the agenda. The first application is Southampton DPW. Do we have?
Continuation.
Yeah.
Is that a continuation?
Yeah.
You held it open from last time, right?
Okay.
So would there be a new affidavit of mailing that you got normally in this situation?
No.
Then you're good.
There's nobody signed it for DPW.
Okay.
I'm not the applicant.
Is there anyone here for DPW? All right, let's move down to Rivian.
Go on to Zoom, check Zoom.
Yeah, oh Kevin, is there anyone for DPW, the applicant?
We have two hands up there.
Two hands.
Two hands is, can you give us some names? Do we know who the applicant is?
So is there anyone here says that? We have David for Blue to Harry Anthony.
Well, if it's a continuation, you've already given your certification at the last session, correct?
They sent the new one, so.
They sent a new one?
They probably reposted the property with the new papers.
Okay, so we're okay with that then? Okay. And are you the, and is the applicant here? Does he wish to speak to the application or she?
I'm not sure. It wasn't directly said, but I'm bringing it on now.
They could be neighbors. That's fine.
Yeah. Since it's open, right?
That's a neighbor, so you know.
Hello, can you hear us?
Yes, we can. We'll take, we'll take your comments.
State your name.
Just state your name for the record.
John Flanagan.
John Flanagan. Are you in the lower image or the upper?
John is in the upper image.
Okay. So John, you're on. John Flanagan?
Yes, I am.
I don't know where the other person is. I don't know. We'll find out. Can you give us your name? Hello?
John Flanagan?
No, I'm looking at the other image.
Okay. Oh, hi, my name is Daniel and I'm just here as a neighbor for public testimony after we hear from the applicant.
I don't think we're going to be hearing.
The applicant is not.
I think that was the applicant, the previous people, Durant, I thought.
John Flanagan, Daniel Durant is the applicant.
Oh, okay.
We have Gordon Von Brock, but in town hall, he got stuck on the L A D in an accident.
Should we move to the next?
You can second call it if you want.
Do you want us to wait?
We could take your comments.
If we could wait, we could later on in the process.
Okay, so why, why don't we hold you? We'll hold this application and we'll go to the next hearing. Kevin, can you keep us apprised?
Done.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to move on to Rivian.
Okay.
Do we have sufficient notice for Rivian?
We do, posting and mailing, yes.
We do, and?
And I will read that.
Tom, yeah.
Please take notice that in accordance with local law number 14 of 2022, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, September 12, 2024, at 6:00 PM at Town Hall, 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, and via video conferencing to consider the site plan application entitled Rivian LLC. The application is to convert an existing 2,000-square-foot retail furniture store into an automotive use dealership and to install electric charging stations located in the Highway Business Zoning District at 1 Montauk Highway, Hamlet of Watermill, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-133-1-6.
Good evening. Joe Papero from Corzio on behalf of Rivian Automotive LLC. As was discussed, this is an application for patio, the patio.com building on Montauk Highway to convert that building into a Rivian charging outpost. We were before the board for a work session back in March. We received your comments and made necessary revisions. The plans resubmitted. There was additional proceedings. The Architectural Review Board weighed in on the application. The application was also, the referrals were also sent out. And we're prepared this evening for the site plan and special exception presentation. The site is located in your Highway Business Zone where the automotive use is a special exception use. We do have a number of witnesses here this evening. Similar to our presentation at the work session, I would like to begin with Representative of Rivian, just to remind everyone about this unique use. It is exciting, an exciting project and a repurposing of this building. The plans demonstrate the desire for Rivian to really preserve the character of that building, but also, you know, update, make updates where necessary and also obviously install the charging stations for the proposal. So unless there's preliminary questions, I'd like to move directly with Justin Ackerman from Rivian to give you all another overview of what this charging outpost in Rivian auto use will look like here. So.
That's fine. Is that Justin?
Ackerman.
Ackerman.
Yep. Justin?
Hi, everyone. So we are, as Joe mentioned, we're looking at doing what we call a charging outpost on 1 Montauk Way in Southampton. The project itself is pretty much amenitized charging. And so what will happen there is we're going to be installing six chart, or six chargers total. And then have a small retail component on the interior where we sell our merch, our merchandise. And then we'll also be doing demonstration drives out of the site. So there will be a couple cars on hand for those demo drives and stored on site. Architecturally, as Joe mentioned, we're looking at preserving the character of the building as much as possible and improving the landscape around it. We're not adding any additional parking. We're kind of leveraging what's existing. Making the, we're also making kind of the access in and out of the site a lot more efficient. I know there were concerns raised at the initial meeting that we had about kind of the safety of that intersection. So we're trying to address those as, as much as possible also.
Is there anything you can show us on here about the, how you are going?
Yeah, if we want to look at the, there was a first. Yeah, do we want to go to the site plan actually? Yeah, if you want to zoom in a bit, it's changed slightly based on comments that we've actually received through the, through the planning and zoning process. But what we're looking at doing is actually having on the lower right-hand side, that becomes the entrance and exit. So that becomes the only access to the site. We're going to be closing down the other kind of more problematic access to the site. And then individuals, drivers who visit the site, it's going to be kind of a one-way thoroughfare through and around the building. And then we'll have charging adjacent in the upper left-hand corner, charging adjacent to the infrastructure required for that charging. So the cabinets and transformer. And then a small play yard on the north side of the building for individuals who are going to be charging. A lot of our clientele has kids, a lot of people coming up here, you know, kids and pets, and so definitely want to create an opportunity to keep your family busy and happy while your car is sitting there charging. And then as you enter the building, there's going to be kind of a large table. Is there a space plan? Yeah, there we go. The coffee bar, this rendering has been updated a little bit since too, we've actually pulled that coffee bar program out completely. I know there was a request to pull the permits apart, but I think more, the more digging that we did and kind of the feedback that we heard from you guys was like, the most local coffee shop is literally next door. And so we didn't want to create like any competition. And we actually had some conversations with them early on and just decided it was kind of the, in the best interests of everyone to kind of eliminate that program. So here it's mainly, you know, what we're doing is creating a space for people to hang out while they charge and to sell our, our merchandise on site. And so charging takes anywhere between 25 and 45 minutes typically. So that's kind of the duration of time that individuals will be on site. And then if we go back to the floor plan. If you zoom in a little bit on that guy.
Oh, you have it on the plan here.
Yeah, it, it's updated a little bit. As I said, like the coffee bar is no longer there, but, but that larger space is that lounge area. And then as you move down to the current kind of main entrance to the patio.com, we'll have a little driver's lounge. And so it's appointment only. Demonstration drives will be kind of done out of the property as well.
You said there was going, going to be one in and out from Montauk Highway.
Yeah.
So therefore there's no, no access going east? Or are you suggesting that you're going to have east and west leaving the site?
I think we have another witness. We'll let our civil engineer go through the, because the plan has changed. The plan of being displayed is not the plan that, the most updated plan that the town has on file that has the driveway being closed. So we'd rather, I prefer to have the engineer walk through the site plan.
Okay, okay. That's good.
Is your facility accessible to non-Rivian vehicles?
Yeah, so right now our network is closed, but Q3 of this year, I think around November, we are announcing that we're opening it up. So anyone within, with CSS kind of universal charger can charge at them.
Will there be converters if they, if they have a different charging?
No, that's sort of left up to the EV owner to have an adapter.
So theoretically, every, every EV owner in the area could utilize your facility?
Yeah, yep.
And you have only six stations, six chargers?
Only six, yeah.
You're going to expand that or leave it at six?
I think we could open to, be open to expanding it. I mean, based on our kind of initial research, I think a lot of, what we found is that a lot of the EV, a lot of people that have EVs up here have charging at home. So it's not necessarily a huge, there's not, I don't, we didn't find a huge demand for it.
It's more drive-through on the way east.
Yeah, so we didn't need a, we didn't see a huge need to expand it beyond six. But I mean, I think we're definitely open to see how, how it does.
So getting in and out of it is key. So who's presenting that?
Rob Fruit is our civil engineer. Rob, can you want to come forward? And again, I know your, your plan is, the plan that we're referring to is up on the wall here, but I think you have.
Is it okay if I?
Yes.
Put it as well, great.
Actually, now the podium is hiding it for us.
Just pull a little bit.
I didn't want to block the, the.
Call it as well.
You can block.
They get Rob Fruit with Dynamic Engineering for the record. So I'll just quickly go through the, the access and circulation. We did get feedback from the county requesting that the driveway to the bypass is closed. So what you see on this rendering here is that what was formerly a vigorous access to the bypass is going to be eliminated. That's about 2,500 square feet of impervious, which kind of goes to some other conversations we've had about limiting the impervious where we don't need it. So everything we've done from a calculation standpoint has been on-site as far as keeping the impervious on-site, less than it is today. But a benefit is that about 2,500 square feet of pavement will come out when that driveway gets removed. So as Justin mentioned, from Montauk Highway, we'll come in here, it will be a full movement driveway as it is today, and then circulation will run counterclockwise around the building to park it across the rear with the charge stations facing the rear. And then you would come out, there's a larger trailer charge station next to the building. The amenities are behind the building. Then you would continue around and come out to the driveway entrance there where again it would be a, a full movement in and out as it is today.
So you're suggesting a left turn?
Yes.
Left turn going in.
Going and going out.
Highly dangerous.
I believe today there are no restrictions on the driveway and our intention would be to keep it the same with.
Well, this is, this is a new plan, so. I mean, that's, it's a death trap to make turns in and out of there.
Particularly with the traffic that's pouring down from the east going west.
And if you're going east, how are you going to get in, you know?
Understood. And we have an application with the DOT that is certainly reviewing access and turning movements in and out. Corey Chase is our traffic engineer. He can speak to that.
I mean, we traditionally on highways like this, we don't, we prohibit left turns.
Okay.
Getting, getting in is, if someone is going east, they're driving in from the city and they want to charge, how are they going to cross over?
Because you basically.
The oncoming, you're going across a row of cars.
And you basically, you have two lanes merging into one.
Yeah.
Going east around the bend.
Yeah, again, our, our traffic engineer can probably speak to that because he's been dealing with the DOT on it. We certainly understand your concerns. We'll let Corey speak a little bit more detail on that and we'll also talk to the.
David White, lane up the head of pond, over the bridge, right turn, past the parish art museum, right turn. And when you want to leave, take the exact same route because I do it. I run up the, one of the dealerships up there regularly and that's how we do it. Question, can you foresee, sorry, can you foresee the need for a canopy in the future with charging stations?
It hasn't been a consideration yet, no.
Because what we're seeing in all the gas stations is, you know, years ago they used to be open air. Now they're all coming in for canopies for inclement, inclement weather. Your customers are exiting the vehicle and charging. So you, you don't see the future need for a canopy?
I, I don't. I think the, the difference there, and I've done a number of service station applications over the years when we were putting canopies up, I think the difference is in those cases, you have attendance there or, I'm New Jersey, so we, we have people that are pumping the gas, but, or you're pumping your own gas and you're standing there, or you have transactions happening, you know, before a lot of the credit card activity. So the activity at the charging is a little bit different than a, a gas station where you're actually actively pumping the gas and conducting the transaction. So the, the activity at it is much less. So you'll go in, you'll arrive, you'll plug in, and then you can go in and use the amenities if you're there in inclement weather.
I think the canopy is also a second purpose of a more efficient installation of the fire suppression to the, to the gas station, which is required.
And certainly the, absolutely, yeah, for service station. That is not, not a requirement in this case.
Do we get any more insights onto the turning in and out? Someone here want to speak to that?
Good evening, everyone. Corey Chase with Dynamic.
You have to go to the mic. The recording equipment.
Again, Corey Chase with Dynamic Traffic. As Mr. Fruit mentioned, we are, it is our current proposal to maintain full access to the driveway on Montauk Highway. As you correctly noted, we are at the point when traffic going eastbound, there are actually two lanes along our frontage. So if someone was stopped waiting to make a left turn into the site, there's the ability for someone to bypass them and continue east so it would not impede the through traffic. As vehicles are traveling westbound, it's actually just one lane at that point. It hasn't quite opened up to two lanes yet, so it is just a single lane at that point. So you are just crossing one lane of traffic turning in. As Mr. Fruit mentioned, we did submit initial proposal review application to the New York State Department of Transportation. That's currently under review. We did get the comments back from Suffolk County Highway. They obviously were, as we had expected, wanting the existing driveway along the ramp to the bypass to be closed. So as Mr. Fruit mentioned, the, the plan that's before you this evening shows the elimination of that existing driveway to the bypass and the replacement with it being seeded in grassed areas. So fortunately, we are still awaiting those comments from the Department of Transportation. You know, obviously, we're subject to outside agency approval as part of any approval that the town would see fit to grant. So we will have to comply with whatever their comments are. But we're still in the process of working through that with them. We intend to, you know, go through the process and address any comments that they may issue.
Well, there's no doubt we'd probably require a traffic study, particularly at this location, which is accident records and all of that would have to be pulled.
And you're mentioning that there's two lanes going eastbound, but they're queuing each other to try to get ahead of the guy next to them because it's two lanes coming from County Road 39 making that left turn. So you've got.
Understood, correct. You have the double left off the bypass and then it merges to one as you get further east past the site.
It becomes gridlock.
And one of the benefits of the use that we're proposing is it is not, it's not a high-traffic generator. You know, you're catering to a very specific population of people. Currently, you know, we're only catering to customers that have Rivian vehicles. Obviously, as Justin mentioned, in the future, they intend on opening up their network to cater to other electric vehicles as well. But we're catering to, to a very specific population of vehicle owner operators. So, and they're also going to become very familiar with the site, you know, given that it is, you know, unique and that it will provide electric vehicle charging and that's all it provides at the site, that the operators of those vehicles are going to become very familiar and they're likely going to cater their trips, you know, to and from this facility as, you know, when they're going somewhere in the area, when it's convenient for them, similar to when someone gets gas.
But you said you were going to open it up to all electric vehicles. So you're going to have people who are not Rivian owners using this, which is going to increase traffic. So, you know, it's a real safety concern, this particular location. So just so that you know, we'll be doing a traffic study.
Understood.
And do you folks have information on when people are using the chargers? Early in the morning, late at night, weekends, midday? Any trends among your existing dealerships? And you'll have to come back up, sorry.
Yeah, actually, I don't have that data on hand, but I know that that's part of like the traffic study would take that into account. I mean, we're about to wrap up a similar project type in Joshua Tree, California. And I think what we saw was obviously like weekend was high, like heavy traffic and then daytime, like early morning, late afternoon is kind of the, the heaviest.
The pattern, right?
But we, yeah, we will be open, like offering charging 24 hours a day, but it really decreases, you know, after people get home.
Okay. You know, as this goes forward, any information in addition to, you know, when we get looking at the traffic, you know, the crashes and things like that? I mean, I can easily see why Suffolk County DPW wanted you to close that. But of course, that then puts the burden on the DOT and the other entrance and exit, so.
I mean, one way in and one way out.
Yeah, I mean, you solve one problem, but exacerbate the other.
You know, in one respect, keeping the other one open and closing this one off would, would preclude, because it's divided at that point, at that western loop. Right, so a car cannot make a left turn in there. It can only access right turn. And when they exit, they can only make a right turn.
Right.
It would, it would eliminate confusion, but instead of having, people are going to be on those, that double radius and they're going to scream, you'll halt, no, I want to get my car charged and try to make a left turn out of there off the, off the county. So we're going to have to look at that.
Yeah.
We might be, it might be better to close that one off, keep the other one open.
And move it further west.
Make a traffic circle so then they can go east.
That'd be nice.
That's where the traffic.
We've got the plans.
What happens there to people?
We would definitely be obviously interested in whatever the DOT, whatever direction they give you.
Right. Oh, yeah, right.
Okay, I think we have some people who would like to speak to this. Is this Mark, is someone marked back to?
There's the concept plan.
Was there rendering? Was there rendering of the building?
So there really, as we mentioned before, there's not a lot of changes architecturally. We're intending to keep the intent of the building intact and really the only significant changes to the exterior includes a, a restroom door for 24-hour access for people charging and reconfiguring that rear exit into a double door, rear exit. So really minimal changes. One of the recommendations that we received from the fire department was to include a sprinkler system. I spoke with David Price on that issue from a building code standpoint. We're not changing the building use, so we would ask to remove that recommendation for the sprinkler system. But otherwise, really everything is maintaining the same architecturally.
And in the wintertime, you'll break down the patio, the outdoor patio.
A little children's reading note to, again, like cater to our family.
Comfortable waiting area.
Yeah.
The rooftop sign.
And then the signage, I was going to say, these, these renderings are outdated. We've changed the signage to align with the feedback that you guys had given us during the working session. So the, that, our, what we call the compass, the little diamond-shaped thing, will be now kind of on either of the two east and west peaks. And then that Rivian sign that's elevated from the roof moves over to where that, that diamond-shaped sign is. So there's no, no roof signage anymore.
You're allowed two signs, right, Anthony? One is on a corner property, two signs.
Sure. From our understanding, the signage permit's under a separate application. So we're, we're using that signage permit under separate review.
If you have any questions, just call the planning department.
Absolutely.
And although I know you're not going to be bringing cars in and out like a traditional dealership, where and how you accommodate for whatever occasional unloading of vehicles, even though it may only be a couple on occasion, we'd want to make sure we see how that's done. Currently, the other dealerships, and again, they do it much more frequently than you will, but currently the dealerships along that corridor park the trailers in the center turn lane and unload from the center turn lane.
Yeah, I mean.
And we know that's all, we all know that's extremely unacceptable.
Yeah.
So.
So we did, the civil team did some studies of like truck turning radiuses on-site to make sure that we can fit a trailer. But really, to be honest, at max, we would be delivering like one car on-site at a time. I don't even know if it would be on a trailer. It would just be for the demo drive vehicles. So we're not technically like delivering any customer vehicles on-site or anything. There's no inventory that's held here. It's just, it's just the demo vehicles, which is going to be like two or three. And they are likely going to be driven on-site.
Okay, thanks.
I have Rob Floyd. That was you. We can check you off on your Rivian.
Hi, everyone. Rachel Verno, I'm speaking on behalf of the Watermill CAC. And we, our CAC sent in a letter this week. I apologize, it was a little late, so I'm not sure if everybody got a chance to look at it. We had pretty standard questions, landscaping, lighting. But we did have some questions just about how, I don't want to call it, I guess maybe it is a dealership, how it would function in terms of where there are going to be a lot of cars on-site. It doesn't sound like it. Is there going to be repairs on-site? In terms of the battery charging, I know with the Tesla, it was limited just to Tesla cars. And I know it's admirable to have it open up to everybody to use, but it does bring up the issue of how many trips then are generated at that site. We've been sort of spoiled over the years that we've had a site that has super-low trip generators. I don't even know if they're open all year round. So that is a really difficult. So that is a really difficult corner, as you've heard, just in terms of getting into and out of that site. It seems logically, if you lived here, you would always just enter as you were heading west and never try to cross the highway. But you can't really prevent people from doing that. And it was sort of surprising, as nice as it is to see all that green in that entrance, but having that exit on County Road 39 does raise some questions in terms of circulation for us. So I leave that to traffic engineers and the traffic reports, but that is certainly something. I would think left turns out of the property on 27 would be super dangerous, especially in the morning rush hour. I don't know who would try it, but somebody will, and then it would be an issue. In terms of keeping things open, like the charging stations and the bathrooms are open 24 hours. So how does that work in terms of security, lighting, you need to have?
Yeah, so right now, we're providing kind of code minimum lighting. We're following any sort of requirements. And we definitely like, one of our biggest, we want to make sure it's a secure site.
Right.
And so that's a huge, security is a huge part of our considerations here. The way the bathroom works actually is when you charge, Rivian gives you a code, so then you can access the restroom. So it's only for people who are charging, it's not necessarily meant to be open to the public in general. Yeah.
We don't have a lot of public restrooms in our area. Usually go to a gas station and people start to, you know, I'm just saying for yourselves, just in terms of. And very glad and thank you for keeping the building and all of that. I think that's a nice way. I've been here long enough to know the plans that went before the planning board. So it's nice to see that structure being saved. The one other question I had is the battery, the transformer. And are there fire concerns about that transformer? You know, just you hear so many things about batteries, and I know those are much bigger batteries. But is there any precautions or any needs for if something does happen with those transformers in terms of fire protection and protocols and all of that? So that was sort of our last, and I'll sit down.
Thank you, yeah. I, we won't be storing any energy on site, so there's no actual battery storage or anything. It's really all just, you know, through, directly from the utility into the car kind of thing. We follow all kind of regulations required for those chargers. I think, you know, they're, they are separated from the building, which I think is a good thing. And fire isn't necessarily a very common thing, I think, with EV charging. I think it gets blown up and blown out of proportion a little bit. But combustible engines and gas stations are actually more volatile.
How are you, how are you hooking into the grid for these chargers?
That's what I wanted to, the transformer that's on the site, that's an electric, that's for your electric service.
There's no battery involved.
No, no battery, yeah, yeah, yeah. So we've been working with PSEG on the upgrade and then kind of moving those chargers forward, yeah.
Good, okay, thanks. Corey Cracks? That was you. Okay, is there anyone? Is there anyone waiting? Kevin? On June?
No one has their hand up.
Okay.
That's Peter there tonight.
Oh, it's Peter, hi Peter. Yes, please, your name?
Hi, my name is Kristen White. I live here in Southampton, pretty close to the site. So I just have two questions. One of them would be, I know that this right now is being presented as not being a dealership, but what is to prevent it from becoming a dealership in the future? Are you going to come before the board and have it become a dealership in a few years when Rivians become more popular and more people out here are buying them? And then my second question would be, not really a question, but just to add a concern about the traffic, that it seems, obviously, there's going to be a traffic study, but just from kind of what the gentlemen have alluded to already. He said weekends, morning, afternoon. When is our worst traffic here? Weekends, mornings, afternoons. That might actually be best because cars are moving so slow that they might be able to make turns in and out of this place. I always find that the easiest time to pull out on the highway is when they're actually stopped and they can smile and wave. But those are the most, and I would also, I hate to assume this, but I live here year-round, so I'm going to assume this, that I also think that the most popular times are going to be in the summertime, which again is when our highest traffic is. So my husband is a volunteer fireman and will be responding to accidents when they happen on this corner. And it is one of the two coastal evacuation routes that we have here on the east end of Long Island. So I would just be very concerned about the traffic and making those left-hand turns in and out.
We are.
So to address kind of the traffic concerns, I think it definitely, I definitely understand. And I think, you know, to keep moving things forward, I mean, I think we're happy to make it like no left turn and figure out a route around that situation so that we're not creating more of an issue. But, yeah.
We'll figure it out.
Yeah, definitely. And then, I'm sorry, the first question.
Do you own the ship?
If it becomes a deal.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So I mean, right now, what we're doing like this, like what these sites do primarily is more about brand recognition and exposure and less about sales. Like we're actually not indexing financially, like fully, on kind of how many sales we have out of these sites. And that's part of, that goes into kind of the determination on the location of each one, too. And so like our other ones right now are outside of Yosemite and one is right outside of Joshua Tree. So neither of those sites could ever be or will ever be a dealership either. And I think the reason we chose this one is because it has that access to the outdoors and to the beach and kind of everything that our customer craves, so, yeah.
Good, thank you. Any other questions from the board? Go ahead.
Is there any, is there any ability for cross-access from this property to anything else that helps you traffic-wise?
No.
To the BMW or?
Oh, they have all their inventory under lock and key, too. You know, those are real dealerships, I don't think so.
So we don't have any ability?
No.
I know there's a cross-access between the Audi dealer. They have a way to get through the back. Yeah, Audi BMW out to that, I've used that when they were doing a renovation. Their dealership, when they were going under renovation, they had, service was there, but you had the back, you know, they had the back linkage, yeah.
It is something to check.
Okay, any other questions? Because we have a lot, we have a long agenda tonight.
No, no more questions. I think the only thing that the applicant and Justin will correct me if I'm wrong is, you know, if we're amenable to conceding to restricting the driveway on Montauk Highway to be right in, right out, would that address the board's concerns relative to the traffic study? Because, you know, we're obviously.
I think we have to look at it, and this is going to require a very detailed traffic analysis.
But I would contend that we're restricting the access to the point, to the maximum point possible. We eliminated the driveway on the bypass. We're restricting the access currently that's full access on Montauk Highway to be right in, right out. So the traffic study is not going to bear any additional information that would make us change that access.
There's no way you can prevent someone, an eastbound vehicle from making a left turn and turning your site. And that goes back to like my thoughts of maybe closing that access because the other access is divided. They can't turn into your site. If they see the, oh, there's a Rivian place, how do I get there? They're going to have to find a way. They can't force that divider to make a left-hand turn into your site.
We can certainly work with the Department of Transportation to propose a channelizing island to restrict those turning movements. You know, we typically propose a restrictive signage, you know, on both sides of the road. So if vehicles heading eastbound will see a no-left-turn sign on their side of the road, we typically post a supplemental one at the driveway, so whether their eyes are looking left or right, you have that channelizing island that actually physically restricts the vehicles.
Where would you post the no-left-turn sign, right, in the middle of the?
No, you post it on the, so you post it on driver's right as they're heading eastbound. So there'll be a sign directly across from the driveway that says no-left-turn. And then we also post a supplemental one right approximate to the driveway. So whether their eyes are driver's right or driver's left, they see the sign in both directions that says no-left-turn. And then obviously, the channelizing island provides a physical restriction that really prevents someone from making that turn.
And you realize that's a merge, they're merged, two lanes are merging into one. This has to reside with a traffic study. We all live here, we know what that corner is like. And so we'll do our job on the planning board and hopefully you'll work with us on it.
Can you just explain how the traffic study would work? I just want to be sure that I'm clear. Is the board commissioning a traffic study or you're looking for the applicant to do that?
We commission it and you pay for it.
Okay.
So, well, is this a pre-submission, by the way?
This is site plan.
Site plan, special exception.
I think it'll be illuminating when you get comments back from the DOT as well, because that's really going to be the thing, so.
That was important.
That'll be interesting.
That was really the point I was trying to make is that we typically do a traffic study when we're arguing to provide additional access than what's being requested. If we're amenable to restricting it to the maximum restriction possible, in my, again, it's just my professional opinion, it precludes the need from the traffic study because the traffic study is not going to bear any information that's going to impose further restrictions. We already restricted it to the maximum point possible. If we were arguing for the lefts in, lefts out, I completely understand where we would need to prepare a traffic study to try to justify continuing to provide those movements. But the fact that the Rivian's amenable to.
Can I, can let me just say something?
Sure.
Traffic is probably the number one issue in this community. It's unique. We are a gridlock. Virtually every road is over capacity. So we have to take a look, a hard look at this site because it's in a very, very acute situation.
And see what actually might work. And maybe that means keeping the other entrance exit open.
Right. That's possible.
And, and, so I, I love the idea of having more lawn and less pavement. But from a safety standpoint, an engineer may say the best solution is both with restrictions.
Got it.
And as a precedent-setting measure, basically, you're never going to get us to say that a traffic study wouldn't have to be done for any project that's happening on County Road 39. It's a critical issue in our community and there's no way.
We couldn't.
Exactly. Okay, so we're going to close this with 30-day written comment period. Motion by Dennis, second by Kate, all in favor. Pose abstentions, six in favor. 30-day written comment period, you can send your letters to the planning board by mail, by email, whatever. Thanks very much. Appreciate it. It's not Kevin, it's who? Pete, Pete?
We don't have any.
Okay, no, but what about Southampton Deep Blue Sea? Did the applicant?
We were having that last.
We're going to put it on last, okay. So we have the Hay Ground School Arts and Science Building. And do we have notice, council?
Yes, we do.
We have notice. George, you want to read it into the record?
Sure. Please take notice that in accordance with Local Law Number 14 of 2022, a public hearing will be held by Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, September 12, 2024, 6:00 p.m. at Town Hall, 116 Hampton Road in Southampton. And via video conferencing, consider site plan application entitled Hay Ground School Arts and Science Building. The application is a 5,980 square foot classroom space addition to an existing school. An underground basement space for a library totaling 3,886 square feet. An IA system, solar roof and charging station, and a 12.76-acre parcel. In the CRAD zoning district, the Ag Overlay District, the Aqua for Protection Overlay District, and New York City Archaeological Center area. At 151 Mitchell Lane, Hamlet and Bridge Hampton, South County Tax Map Number 900-68-1-7.4.
Who's going first, Joe, you?
Good evening, Joe Lombardi from the Rayner Group. Our firm represents Hay Ground School, we've done that for several years. And we have had an approval, the board approved a building very similar to what's being proposed now back in 2018. We subsequently got re-approvals. The last one expired in February of 2024. Building has changed slightly. Was 300, now 3,055 square feet footprint, now that's 3,047 square feet. The below-grade portion of the building is increasing. About 300 square feet. There's an underground library that is making up the bulk of that increase. Since we were modifying the building, and it should be noted that there are no, we're not anticipating an increase in student population or teachers or faculty and staff. It's, it's just to serve the student body that's there now. Since we're modifying the site plan, we've added some green measures. We are putting in, we had approval from the Health Department for a conventional sanitary system. That's what they were approving back in 2018. Now, an IA system is going to be installed. There'll be six charging stations for electric vehicles. We're installing solar panels on the roof. Looking into geothermal wells to heat and cool the building and using construction practices and materials that will reduce the carbon footprint of the building. That's about it.
All the good sustainability issues that we want.
We're trying.
Joe, this library is underground, right?
Yes.
Is there a reason why it can't be built above ground? I'm just, I, I'm just trying to wrap my head around we're building a bunker. To educate, to get educated, I'm thinking of these dark, like, big walls.
Probably three reasons. You don't want windows on a library, you know, you're storing them, you know, you want to store them as much as you can. Most of, you know, a lot of wall space gets taken up by windows, so we're trying to make it as efficient as possible. Being underground, it's energy efficient, it's the best use of underground. You know, you don't have, putting anything outside, it's got to be insulated or whatever. And then the other one is, you don't want to use up all the green glass you've got around there. You know, it's just putting another building there. Put it underground, you don't see it.
Can you give us your name for the record?
Oh, sorry, sorry, David Beridge, David Beridge Architect. So, you know, for me, it was, it made so much sense to just, you know, we had the footprint that was approved. And the reason we're doing a two-story building is, you know, why have it all on one level? You know, these, just urban sprawl, you know, we'll use up all the playing field. So I'm just trying to make the building as efficient and as compact as possible.
I'm assuming all safety requirements we've met as far as egress, ventilation, and so forth.
Yeah, all of that, yeah.
I think you're putting in an underground courtyard?
No, no, no.
I thought there was outside.
Well, there's, well, when it's underground, we'll be putting a green roof on the roof and that'll be gravel or either grass or landscape above it. So it's, you won't see it underground.
But I thought there was a space at ground, at underground level for open.
No, there's just, it's the library.
Okay.
Yeah.
There is like a seating amphitheater-type area?
Yes.
Come out of the lower level of the building and?
That's what I was referring to. Thank you, Joe.
It's a, it's a multi-split level school. We've got the lower-level basement, we've got the upper lower level, and we've got the second floor, so it's very confusing.
Looks like an interesting plan.
Thank you very much.
I'm happy about the green stuff.
Yes.
And I just want to introduce John Burrows, who's going to be doing the building. I think some of you know him from his work on towns in Southampton.
Yes.
I have Robert here, Novak? Yeah, please.
Hi, so I'm Alexis Lassiter and my husband, Robert Novak. And we live right across the street from the Hay Ground School at 323 Butter. And we love the Hay Ground School. I mean, all summer long, we hear the kids, you know, laughing and playing, and so it's a wonderful. I mean, all summer long, we hear the kids, you know, laughing and playing, and so it's a wonderful item to have across the school. Our question really focuses on one of traffic, which is, you know, harking back to all the concerns we have heard before. The traffic on Butter has become pretty crazy and parking in particular has become really heavy with the Soul Cycle and the Equinox, Hay Ground School itself allowing Soul Cycle folks to park there on the weekends. But parking has become pretty dangerous with people parking on every property. We've had to try to block off our property because people will just park right in front of us. And so I'm wondering with the expansion of the school, and I did hear that you said it wasn't going to increase the number of students coming there. But is there a plan around the whole parking situation? Because parking on Butter, people are double parking, walking in the street, has become dangerous and difficult to navigate as someone who lives there. We live here full time, by the way.
The applicant can respond. Joe?
Bob? And are you, are you, are you on Butter Lane or where?
We're on Butter, three two three, we're right across the street.
Literally just finished building the house about a year and a half ago.
And we live here year round, so it's, you know, we're very familiar with the parking and the traffic around here.
David, do you want to respond to that?
Yeah, I, I. Yes, um, well, I'm talking about this, um, you know, the school enrollment and the camp isn't going to change at all. It's going to be built just for the student body they have. I mean, they're not letting anyone students come into the school, both in the summer program and their year round program. And, yeah, I believe that my office is just around the corner as well. I mean, it is amazing where all those cars on a Saturday morning, it's, it's insane. And I think, and I know you've had a dialogue with the Hay Ground School about have to park there and whatever. I think maybe this can be an ongoing conversation, how we can sort of mitigate that. I mean, the school has been there for many years and the student body hasn't changed much. So in some ways, it's, your problem is our problem because we're being impacted by it as well.
We have not, may I speak?
Please speak to us.
We have not been offended in the time that it was only the folks who went to Hay Ground's camp in the summer. It's always a pleasure, they're always wonderful, everything was good, people weren't, but what has happened is other things have opened nearby where the, the parking has become wild. They're literally parking practically in a manner of speaking illegally on streets, all kinds of crazy things. When we had, to leave our house at nine o'clock in the morning, for example, on a Friday or a Saturday, we're, we're stuck in traffic, if you can imagine that. We're stuck in traffic trying to get to under the, the Hay Ground Bridge and get to twenty seven. So basically, this is a thing that, in a manner of speaking in a positive sense, we need to address perhaps also with, with Hay Ground. Where at least mentioned that it, it, it needs to be considered. And the rest of the street needs to be looked at at the same time. I hate to say it, it's just wild.
Yeah.
It's wild.
If I could speak maybe to the broader parking issues. If you feel there are parking issues in, along Butter, whether they're related to the school or related to, you know, other people, businesses. I used to handle the parking regulations for the town. I don't remember whether there are regulations extending as far up as, as your house. But if you're concerned and there are not existing parking regulations, I'd suggest you call the town engineer, Tom Houghton. He's now responsible for reviewing and recommending to the town board any changes in parking regulations on any particular street in the town. If there are existing ones, obviously you can call the police. You know, if there are not existing ones, but they may be necessary. He is reviewing some other streets in Bridge Hampton right now, I know that for parking concerns. Corworth is having some parking changes and things like that. So I would contact the town engineer, Tom Houghton, and ask him to come out and maybe take a look or discuss the issue with him. And he can come out and take a look and see if we need to adjust the town parking regulations to help your situation.
That's very helpful.
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Very civilized.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the board?
Your problem is our problem, so.
Any other questions from the public? Is there anyone on Zoom?
No one on Zoom.
Okay.
Just, just one more thing with respect to parking. I know this summer, the school itself was having issues with people parking on Butter Lane. And they wanted to try to do something about it because they were wanting.
Well, they can do what Tom just said.
Yeah. We'll give Tom a call in the morning.
Exactly, okay. Um, no more questions, we'll close this with a ten day written comment period. Motion by Dennis, second by Kate, all in favor.
Aye.
Post extensions, six in favor. Moving on to the Stella Luna Family Trust. Do we have sufficient notice, counsel?
Uh, nope. Notice is posting and mailing both fine.
They're fine. Okay, Dennis, you want to read?
Please take notice that in accordance with local law fourteen of twenty twenty two, a public hearing will be held by Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, September twelfth, twenty twenty four, six P M. at Town Hall, one sixteen Hampton Road, Southampton. Via video conferencing, we consider the final application entitled Stella Luna Land Trust. The application consists of a two lot planned residential development which preserves fifty percent of the subject property and considers action on an eight point three seven five acre parcel located within the R eighty zoning district and situated in the aquifer protection overlay district located approximately twelve hundred feet south of Neuyac Road at sixteen forty five Millstone Road, Hamlet of Neuyac, Tax Map nine hundred thirteen dash one dash seventy nine point two two.
Good evening, Lisa Poyer with Twin Forks Permits on behalf of the applicant. This is a final subdivision application. This was previously before the board back in twenty sixteen where the board issued a final approval for the subdivision. Something happened with the owners, I don't know a hundred percent, but they've come back to renew the final approval so that we can move forward and actually record the maps. Back in twenty sixteen, as part of that approval, the water mains were installed, the common driveway easement was already prepared and recorded with the county center. So there's not a lot as far as changes. It's a cluster map, a portion of it will be dedicated to the town as far as the open space. It's a minor subdivision, it's two lots, and we're just here to have the final public hearing to hopefully move the project forward again with a new final approval.
That's eight years ago.
Yes.
What improvements are in? The water mains are in, Lisa?
The water mains are in. I don't think the common driveway improvements have been made, but the easement document has been prepared. It was accepted by the town attorney back then and actually recorded with the county center. There is an existing house on lot two. And then lot one will remain vacant at this time.
Yeah, I mean, something happened, obviously, the mapping filed and then things expire and then so you took it over and they had to come with a new health department.
We have new health department approval, so we're just trying to get everything back up to where it was, so it was pretty much at the recording stage.
Good. Any questions on the board? Anyone from the public? Anyone online, I mean, on Zoom? Okay, ten day, I'll close with a ten day written comment period, motion by Dennis, second by George, all in favor. Aye. Post extensions, six in favor.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa.
Thanks.
Okay, we're moving to Hampton Cove Estates. Do we have notice, counsel?
With you.
Gloria?
Please take notice that in accordance with local law number fourteen of two thousand twenty two, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, September twelfth, two thousand twenty four, six P M. At Town Hall, one sixteen Hampton Road, Southampton. And via tele, video teleconference to consider the site plan application entitled Hampton Cove Estates. The application proposes a legalization of the conversion of an eight unit pre-existing motel building into eight co-op units situated in the R twenty zoning district and New York State Archaeological Sensitive Area at forty Canoe Place Road, Hamlet of Hampton Bays, Suffolk County Tax Map number nine hundred two two nine dash one dash forty.
Good evening, Kevin Springer, Dynamic Legal for the applicant. Couple of quick reminders, this, you, well, this building has been operating as co-ops basically since the mid to late eighties. It was only due to last few years where a code enforcement official became aware that it was a problem and it was not. So it hasn't been a hotel. I have spoken to, I believe, five out of the six, we've done multiple mailings, we had a clerical error the last time. They all would prefer it to stay as a co-op, nobody wants it to go back to a hotel. It has the eight units or the eight units, we've handed in the floor plans. There was a question on two of the units that they had questioned that way, looks like it could be a second bedroom. They're marked as storage, one of them is actually has a, doesn't have a closet in that one. It does have a washer dryer, even though there's a washer dryer in the basement. The other one, we couldn't confirm, but everybody was reminded that upon your approval, hopefully, that we will, the building department will be coming into each unit. And if, if that is the case, they will have to take down whatever walls that have been put up since then.
This is a co-op, not a condo?
No.
It's a co-op.
Co-op, yep. It's been operating as a co-op. They've been, many of them have been, been bought and sold for, I don't know, years now.
Used to be a motel.
Used to be a motel, yes, many years ago. The, you did have some notes that I did want to, I spoke about the floor plans. There was a shed that was in a non-conforming location that has since been moved. The dumpster, there hasn't been a dumpster there in actually quite some time, I think that was from a Google Earth picture. But we actually, they are now using basically a carter which just pales anyway, so that has not been, that's been addressed also. Let's see, what else do we have here? That was really it. I mean, basically, everything is going to end up falling into the hands of the, the building department next anyway because that's our next step. So whatever is, whatever they don't like or we, or question, we're going to have to prove that we either fix it or they deny it until we do fix it.
What about septic, has the septic been upgraded to AI systems?
No, septic has, but there's never been a septic issue there. It's been, it's been the same septic system for the last thirty years.
Is it technically a change of use?
Do they have to go to the health department? Do they have to go to the health department?
They would have, I mean, if you.
I don't know the answer to that, I'll have to find out at the building department.
Well, I.
They have their own standards, you know, that say when the application comes in, what drives. And then the health department also has their memo that they have that says what drives, you know, the requirement.
I did meet with Mr. McDermott on this, and this was a while back. And he said, if you, if everything is the same that it was, we technically can't, you know, we can't make you change it unless somebody does something that is, as per se puts in a second bedroom. As soon as we go over the eight single bedroom units, all bets are off and then you have, we have to go to a new septic system and it will be an IA, obviously, because it's also in a mandated area. So no matter what, that would be, that would be.
So is it recorded right now as a motel and it's changing to co-op? Is that a change of use that was?
Yeah, the CO states, still states as a motel. And it's been that way, you know, it's been, you know, we're talking back in the seventies.
So do we get a new CO?
Yes, that's why we're gonna have to go to the building department.
Right.
But wouldn't.
And does that go to the health department?
Allow.
Well, that, they're, that's going to be up to Mr. McDermott and his, and his team. They're gonna.
Mr. McDermott.
Sean. So he's.
Someone goes in for a building permit, they, for a single tenant, they're going to do renovations. Building department goes and says, okay, on record say you have a three bedroom unit, they want to put four bedrooms in there. Building department says you have to come in with the health department approval that shows a septic system upgrade. They treat commercial properties the same way, actually, it's the same type of thing. Something will drive, I don't know if this particular change of use.
Right, but if we're looking at a site plan, change of use, we're completing an action that would then require us to look at a septic upgrade for the site, which is very close to the water.
Yes. So that's just a heads up, that, that may happen.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments from the board? Anyone from the public wishing to speak? Anyone on Zoom?
No one on Zoom.
Okay, we're going to close with a ten day written comment period. Motion by Kate, second by Gloria, all in favor.
Aye.
Post extensions, six in favor, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
No. So we're going back to Deep Blue Sea. And the applicant doesn't need to be here, we can take tech. Oh, you are here.
Oh, yeah.
Good, thank you.
It's a continuation, so we don't have to read the notice, there's no noticing.
Do you want to give the, uh, David?
Do you have another one?
Well, the same one, but it's the original.
Oh, you can give it to counsel.
Thank you. And I've seen the copy, so we have.
Yeah, it's the same thing, yeah. So I'm Gordon Monbrooke, been the owner of the location for almost thirty years now with John Flanagan. So we're here today because originally we submitted a possible subdivision, but we resubmitted the plans and it's just going to be a single use cannabis, recreational cannabis. Just, so I wasn't here for that hearing, but it's correct, I think the board raised the question, you said subdivision, I'm going to clarify. Okay, not subdivision, sorry. Was subdivided into different space, I think that's what they were talking about, for two uses, right? And we're just going to make it one single use.
Is this me, tax burdened?
No, this is the other one right here.
The Deep Blue Sea.
This is the one.
Behind the Carvel.
Yeah, 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 yeah. The old club.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
We had a, quite a robust hearing at our last meeting.
Yeah.
Regarding some of the local residents, were you aware?
I was, I was on Zoom.
You were on the Zoom, okay.
But, yeah, I understand everything going on with that, but, you know, we're, we're, we're going to be involved as the owners of the property, that's the difference. Like, we're just landlords and that's, we've been landlords for fifteen years now. So now it's, it's different in that respect. But, you know, the main purpose, I guess, for today is just that we're going to be doing it as a single use, we resubmitted the plans.
Okay.
Okay, I think we have some people on Zoom who wanted to.
Okay.
Have some statements. Are those people still there?
Maybe, yes. Yeah. There, there is.
There you are, yes. What, Mr., can you just state your name? John Flanigan.
Yeah, I live at twenty five Village Drive, Southampton, near the park street from the site, being discussed this evening. I mean, I, forgive, forgive my ignorance, but I, I, where are the plans? Like, you know, I've been on for an hour seeing other applicants and provide their plans, Rivian provided.
You have it?
You know, several different plans.
Do we have them in there?
Drawings and whatnot, I mean, I, I haven't seen anything from this, from this applicant yet.
Well, we're just getting to the application now.
Okay, so are they, are they presenting or?
They presented last time.
This is a continuation of the initial, were you at the initial hearing?
I wasn't.
He was there.
Okay, this is, it was adjourned, it was, the, the original hearing was adjourned to allow additional members of the public, not the applicant. We heard the applicant's presentation a month ago. We, the purpose of this hearing is to get additional comments from the public.
Okay, well. The plan is coming on.
Well, the name, my name, I, I, I have, we have no idea what this thing is going to look like. I stopped there, I've read the meeting, we, we, many of us read the meeting. There isn't any clue what this thing is going to look like.
Is it going to be redesigned or you're tearing it down?
Yeah, but I, so from what I understand, and correct me if I'm wrong, this is pre-submission where we're basically saying this is the use of what we want to do and, and then we're going to do full plans of the look of the place and everything after once we start doing submission. But maybe, is that correct?
Are you doing any exterior alterations?
I mean, not.
To the building.
To the building.
To the building, not really. I mean, most everything is going to be pretty much the same in terms of, I mean, if anything, everything will be, you know, we'll just clean it up, make it nicer. You know, it's going to be a retail space. So if you look at a lot of the cannabis dispensaries now, they're, you know, very elevated, beautiful spaces. And that's kind of the, and the thing that we'll be submitting.
So the purpose.
Here's a, here's a. Can, can you see this? No, we're Zoom person.
No, I just see, I just see the applicant, he's doing stuff behind the wall, I don't know if that's relevant to his application or if that's from a prior one.
Yeah, there's a.
We could post paper behind, I guess the cameras just.
Now, now I see something on, I'm going to do a announcement, yeah.
Can you see it?
Yeah. Listen, our, our biggest questions have to deal with traffic, have to deal with illumination, you know, particularly at night and whatnot. Given, you know, the climate being so, and, and everything else, security related. It has to do with the fact that this is an old, old building currently operated in this club with moving base. And while I understand that that is going away, we want to ensure that there's some type of additional soundproofing that's brought up to, to current day codes because take a, take a drive down there at midnight, I mean, it's adding some crazy soundproofing. I guess this is a different use, but the building should be modernized and sort of changed in the interiors and ensure that there's some level of soundproofing because. interior to ensure that there's some level of soundproofing, because, you know, I don't, again, I don't know what studies they've done, no idea how many people they expect to come in out of their own basis. Um, but, you know, soundproofing is an issue. And then, and then, you know, landscaping and everything else, but, you know, we have our family community across the street, there's fifty units directly across the street, of the fifty units, there's probably twenty-five, um, full time residents of the twenty-five, I'd say fifteen. You could take, have young children, many of the others, you know, have, have guests, have visits, with the grandchildren and all. Like, we just want this, like, yeah, I'm not a guest to use. We just want to ensure that there is ample landscaping, to make it private, to make it secluded, lighting at night, and respecting security, ensuring that there's no, I mean, there's legally illegal to have any type of on-site consumption, but we want to ensure that there's a plan in place so that as patrons exit the facility, there's no consumption on their, on their property, including, you know, the parking lot. So a security plan and having a staff member or somebody, um, you know, that's to, to watch over that and enforce that plan is critical. Um, parking along Tuckahoe should, uh, there be, you know, overfill, or there be, you know, more, uh, patrons than, than, than the lot involved, ensuring somebody is, is, I don't feel like it's possible for the town to put up, uh, no standing signs, that there was some no standing sign, temporary standing signs that were put up during the Amity Festival that occurred earlier, you know, Sinico. I don't know if it's possible to put permanent signs there, uh, so that, you know, it's clear to folks there that they're not allowed to just pull over and park their car along that road, because if they do that, it's going to make it impossible, uh, you know, to get in and out of our development, because that's going to be crazy. We already seen it, we've heard all night about traffic, uh, on, you know, uh, on the major road and sort of the S letter roads, like outages, it's directly down from the main road. I mean, those are the big things we, you know, we, we, we want to save, you know? Um, that's, that's pretty much it. And I love the fact that, that the applicant says that they're going to be around full time, he's firmly did not, and that's what we need to be out. The, the current guy that's there, the candidate, is a, is a, is a, and there's nobody, uh, there's nobody overseeing it, you know?
A lot, a lot of the things that you suggested that you'd like to know about is part of the site plan application. This is pre-submission. This is just sort of the very beginning. So when they put a site plan application.
Yes, there'll be another hearing.
All of that will be, I, yeah.
And at the time of the second hearing, there's going to be a landscape plan, there's going to be a lighting plan, there's going to be architectural, because all of these things, we're going to generate a report and tell this applicant, you've got to do all these things. In addition to some of the issues you mentioned, which is very relevant, maybe a safety plan, a monitoring plan for the parking lot, looking at the, the roadside on Tuckahoe, limitation of, of any standing there. So those are all good comments. They're all entered into the record now. Yeah, and just for the rec, oh, sorry.
There will be, um, public hearings at that, during that process, so you'll have more input.
And the special exception standards, the two big ones, particularly in a property like this location. Now, you have the traffic study that you could ask for, um, and the whole pedestrian circulation concept. So now you do have a residential community, you have concerns that were raised. Um, so these, so that information absolutely can be requested by this board. No parking on that road and that kind of stuff.
I know there are parking restrictions on that road already, because I helped enact them. Um, but again, we can define that more tightly when the final application comes in, and I'm sure you're going to want, we're going to want to know what your hours of operation are expected to be.
Right.
You know, those are, all these things are things we're going to have to ask you to address.
Yeah, a hundred percent. And, and a lot of things that you're talking about, um, the state, you know, has very, very regulated times, regulate, the security systems are next level of what we have to put in and place. So I think everything will be addressed plus some. And then, and, and we're going to, you know, have a whole plan with the landscaping and parking and everything else, so.
And you'll be a good neighbor.
Yes.
So that's important. All right, Mr. Flanagan, you could put your comments in a letter to us.
Okay.
If you want to.
Or email.
Or email.
I know we, we already did during the first hearing, I'm just.
Okay, great.
I thought they were going to take those comments and present more like Rivian.
No, it's too early for that.
Next time.
It's, it's too early.
Next session.
Just read second hearing.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, don't go away. I think, let me just see, is there someone else online?
There was another couple.
They're part of the.
Oh, no, it's, it's my partner.
Oh, okay.
Okay, great. All right, thank you.
Uh, she wants to be heard.
Yes?
Are you going to close access from the, from the gas station? Are you going to close the dirt road that comes from the gas station?
Uh, that's, I mean, it's a public, it's a public road.
It is a public road. It's a public easement.
Yes.
Okay.
That was easy.
Okay, any more questions?
Someone else.
Do, do you need to speak, or are you, this is your partner?
Yeah, yeah, I'm, 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 I'm just, I was just, I'm coming, I was, on the last meeting.
Please give us your name.
John Flanagan, the owner of the property, along with Mr. Von Brock.
Yes, go ahead, please.
So I just, I mean, the last meeting, as I said, there's a little, uh, there's some locals tenants from across the street, and Mr. Yen and his wife have, uh, have had some conversations about me not being a local, not being present, not being in Southampton. Um, I'm not in Southampton today, but I've been in Southampton nine out of the last six months. Um, outside of that, I've been away for three months. I've spent the bulk of my life in Southampton. Uh, my great grandparents, my parents, my aunt is, uh, my grand is probably buried out there. I've, I've, you know, I've been, we've had property out there for over a hundred years. So I'm far from somebody who has been, you know, told that I live on the West Coast, or an absentee landlord or anything else. I made sure all summer to look at our tenants, make sure that if people were having problems with him, um, that we were actively involved in making sure that there weren't any issues. And, and the code enforcement, the police department, car department, everybody else. So, and as far as what this will look like, and I was listening to Mr. Yen, the same with the soundproofing, getting midnight going forward, the state doesn't allow us to open past nine o'clock at night, as Mr. Von Brock said. There are some very specific times where we're allowed to open and close. And so that's dictated by the state, not by us. And so, you know, if this is a, a retail store, it wouldn't be a night slot any longer. Um, as you know, the town, from when I was a young man, there would be fourteen places across the way around the town. We might be the last one standing. So if, you know, it's a completely different usage. As far as dictating policies, Mr. Yen said he might allow us to stay open until seven o'clock last time. In a meeting, there will be a conversation of that, really, go by what the state tells us to do. Uh, as far as parking outside of the street, we are more than enough parking spots in our location, you know, for the amount of people that would be in there. Um, and as far as what we have changed in the building itself, building itself will remain the same, the interior will change. And we plan on doing landscaping and lighting that would be, um, you know, look like parish sharpies. It'll, it'll make, you know, look to beautify the earth, um, and make it look a lot better than the higher ground of the development that you live in, and train the passus in on the other side, the golf course, the driving range on one side, or the car down, or the, the state can. So I think it would be an addition as we own the property for the thirty years, or that was a field, you know, a commercial piece of property, and would turn into residential, you know, surprisingly. So I think that, you know, we're looking to be a very good neighbor and, uh, and, and not have problems with any of the.
Okay, thanks very much for those comments.
Okay, thank you.
Any more? Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Any other comments from the board? Okay, so we're closed.
I would just like to say that the state government's operating now, is the towns and local municipalities can, or.
No, they can't.
No, you can, uh, we cannot, we cannot oversee state regs.
I don't know, I'll be sitting, I'll be sitting, going to the record, if you, you're, 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 in, in your, if you're on the, if you're on the, if you Google, if you Google, if you Google, what is that, what is that?
Uh, please don't have a dialogue for yourself. You're in front of the planning board, not with each other.
Please, s, submit your comments down, writing.
Okay, we're closing this hearing now, uh, with a ten day written comment period.
Motion.
Motion by Kate, second by Gloria, and all in favor.
Aye.